Yeah. It's the, uh, this relates only to suburban estates and the controversy between one part saying 50 and one part saying 30. None of the other setbacks are relevant for your public hearing.
Anybody else? Anybody else know? Okay. I'll open the public hearing approximately, what, 10 minutes after, 12 minutes after six? As I stated, please approach the podium, give us your name and address and your comments. You may line up as you please.
Uh, my name is Matthew Johnson. I live at 1300 Massa Side Trail. I'd like to point out that this hearing began with a pledge of allegiance. And the pledge reminds me of the people here in attendance tonight, especially those sitting before me, have a duty and obligation to hold the faith in our community and our local government to do what is just. Uh, this means putting aside what one individually stands to gain or lose their political capital or other subjects conflicts for the betterment of the community. Today you will hear testimony and opposition, the letters in opposition, signatures in opposition, and as clearly spoken, opposition changing the suburban side setbacks from 50 feet to 30 feet. Uh, and it's more than enough for this board to ignore, do the right thing and make the right management decision to keep the side setbacks at 50 feet. I would also like to remind the room that everyone in this community has the right to use their property in accordance to the rules and local ordinances and follow appropriate policies and procedures in doing so, not bypassing them altogether nor changing them hastily at the detriment of the community. The governing rules allow for variances when rare extending circumstances do not fit the norm or applying the rules in such circumstances are impossible. Making the change from 50 feet to 30 feet is an extreme unnecessary measure taken by this board without providing management onto the public to what public benefit it serves the, to the very community that opposes it. All I ask of this board is to do the next right thing and maintain side setbacks, the suburban states at 50 feet. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next.
Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Um, my name is Patrick Ryan. I live at 135 Brewer Road, uh, right across from Mr. Smith. And, uh, I bought the Preston Place. I've been there 21 years. And every day I leave Frazier to drive home. It's a thrill to me to pull down Brewer Road and go back in my little estate and hide. And when this first issue came up, it didn't really, you know, you look at it and you go, it really doesn't affect me. Well, recently the people to the east of me had a, uh, heart attack or had a stroke and they sold and they're moving out and I have new people moving in. If the setback were to go to 30 feet, someone could put a building right where my best view is off my deck. And, uh, I know 20 feet isn't a lot, but still it allows me to have a better view to the stream and to the place that I love. And I don't want, ever want to leave here because it's just, it's awesome. The only problems I've ever had and I've never had to be in front of this board have been with the beaver. I'd rather fight the critters than people. And it's not that I don't like people. I own a dye or I run a dye shop and I've been there 40 years and I've been here 21. So I have a history of liking where I'm at. I go to the strawberry festival. I just love it. And what we've done around here by the park area behind Addison has kept us really nice. I used to buy all my stuff from Mr. Smith, but I can't get down Rochester Road. What's happened to Oakland Township is it's just, there's too many people and they're on top of each other. And isn't this the issue we're talking about? We've got to maintain our space away from each other, otherwise all we do is fight. And I think in this day and age, we've got enough fighting. It takes me an hour and a half to get home from 15 and Kelly. And yet I do it every day because I'm not leaving here. And I would prefer if we kept it at 50 feet. Because I think it's fair for you to be able to use your property, but you don't need to encroach on anybody else. And we're all neighbors. We all need to get along. And, uh, the neighbor to the west of me I talked to, which is directly behind, um, I'm directly behind Rose and he's right directly behind the other gentleman that, um, had brought all these issues up. And he signed a petition to stay at 50. And he's got the three acres. I've got the 11. So, um, that's my opinion. And I know that you have to look at all issues and all people and listen to everybody and then it's the better manner of the community. And I would like to thank you for your service because I'm one of those people that believe that if you have a problem, unless you have a solution, you should not be complaining. And I know that it's hard to be on these boards. It's hard to, um, take care of all these issues. And I just wanted my opinion to be heard and I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Chair.
Hello, everyone. My name is Candace Johnson and my legal address is 1375 Massa Saga in Leonard, Michigan, 48367. Um, my parents' property is there. And, um, standing to inherit that potentially one day and also, you know, being here and speaking with them and knowing how much they love the property and their privacy was one of the big reasons that they purchased on that sub. And so, you know, I would like to put it out there that I, I would prefer that it stay at 50 feet. I would like to protect that, um, you know, the investment that I stand to inherit one day. And I know that's the reason we all love being on that property.
Thank you.
I would like the permission to, um, give Pauline four more letters and three more signatures.
You can put them right here. I've made a presentation for you to look over. Just put them right there.
And I would like to say that, um, okay, I'm Roseanne Johnson, 1300 Massa Side Trail. And I have for almost 40 years. And you know, you all know my story. My husband developed it. Um, uh, and it is, what, it's like four eight, uh, four parcels on Brewer and nine parcels on Massa Saga. And we've all really got along, all right, over the years. Hasn't been one problem. And I'm sure Mr. Ryan can attest to that too. And I want to commend Mr. Bowman, first of all, for repeatedly saying, uh, that if any person in the suburban estates has an issue, we have a procedure called the zoning board of appeals that they can go to if they don't like what the setbacks are. And as of today, I mean, I like them. I want it 50 feet, obviously. But, um, as of today, no one has come forth. And I've talked to like probably 200 people in this community and no one can say that they want things to be changed just because there's some person that doesn't want to look at a structure that he's going to put up when he's got 10 acres. Now, I want to go way back and I, you already heard the story, but when this all started out, my neighbor was going to put it in at 15 feet instead of 50. 15 feet. And I have pictures of that. But when he bought the property, it was 50 feet. If you want pictures, I've got pictures. So when he bought the property, it was 50 feet. He put his shed out across from his garage, it was 50 feet. He got a building permit from the township in 2018 and it was 50 feet. And now we're struggling with this, you know, whether it's 50 or 30. Okay? I don't want it to be, uh, 30 because he's going to be driving the tree line and I could show you pictures and you wouldn't want it either with his equipment, four-wheelers and blah, blah, blah. Plus he took, he took down a lot of trees and brush and it was completely private. In fact, he put in a pool and we didn't even know it because we couldn't see it. We couldn't hear it. But now he's taken that all away. So if he wants to put in a structure at 50 feet, I could show you where he has plenty of room to put it because he doesn't have an irregularly shaped lot. He's on 10 acres. And I'm going to see it. He's going to see it. And, but it's, you know, it's all within the code. I don't get it. I'm just asking him to keep it the same. He, he had an opportunity and I could show you documentation to sit down with me and my, I tried to talk to him several times and he didn't want to talk to me. He retreated. You know, I'm mad at you, blah, blah, blah. But my attorney had to stop him from cutting down the brush and trees. I got a letter here. That's what stopped him. He didn't want to get a survey. I got the survey. And I know exactly where all the stakes are and 50 feet works for me and 50 feet can work for him too. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. My name is Mike McDonald. I live at 51 East Elmwood in Leonard. And I know a lot of you and I know a lot of these people, including you. I want to thank you for the opportunity to take advantage of this public hearing, to have some input on the situation that you're discussing. And we can't leave it the way it is because frankly, there's a discrepancy. It's either 50 feet or 30 feet. So talking about leaving it the way it is is really not an accurate way to talk about it. It should be 50 or 30 feet. It is not currently clear what is right. So we're going to advance on that. I was intimately involved in the situation because the, this district was drafted while I was still township supervisor. And I'd like to give you some direct information on the background and the adoption of this zoning district. The Addison Township Board of Trustees was looking for a way to keep the township from being broken up into two acre lots. Development, we saw 20, 30 years ago, development was coming and the only choices people really had were large lots or two acre lots, 10 acres and above or two acres and below. So we, we tried to find it and we compromised with a three acre lot, hoping that it would prove attractive to residents that were looking to develop and to people that were looking to buy. It would make a reasonably priced competitive lot size. Township Board directed the planning commission and the planner to review the situation. And I don't believe the planner at the time was Ray Bowman. I think it was the previous company, McKenna, which we left. Township Board, uh, directed them to review the situation and come up with, and eventually we had all agreed on a three acre suburban estate concept. The main thrust in the creation of this district was to reduce density. It wasn't to change radically how people could use their own property. So the setbacks and everything that were discussed at that time and were initially appeared correct, um, was that the owners could develop land and keep the parcels larger than the two acre size. And while the language for the district was reviewed, it's clear now that there was a problem with the language used in the description of suburban estates that appears to conflict with itself and the accessory structures section of the zoning ordinance. In my opinion, this was an oversight and the intention was never to make suburban estate zoning more restrictive than any other Addison Township zoning district. It would make little sense to allow adjacent property that is not zoned suburban estates like agricultural or suburban farms to have less setback than the suburban estates does. You're, you're taking a larger piece of property that somebody owns and saying that you can use less of it. And essentially you're making a suburban estate parcel effectively the same usable area or close to it, depending on the size, as a, um, as a suburban farm sized property. The township board intended, and again, this is my opinion, was to make the new zoning district more attractive while giving people the right to use their property in much the same manner as other Addison Township residential zoning units. And I know you especially have heard people coming to you and say, I don't want this in my backyard. But it's a fact of life that people have a right to use their property, that they pay for it and they take care of and pay taxes on it in a manner consistent with the law. And that's what we're all talking about tonight. It was not the intention of the township board at that time to change setbacks for accessory structures as defined in the zoning ordinance. It was with a sense of responsibility for not catching this lack of specificity before it was adopted that I am talking to you today. I take some responsibility for that. I wasn't the only one looking at the language and trying to proofread the ordinance, but mistakes obviously happen. I attribute the current situation to the fact that the township basically never was challenged and had continued to use the current setbacks in all residential zoning units and there hadn't been a problem before this. Hopefully this information will help you as you consider the direction you will take with the township while resolving this matter. It is often a complex and not easily described job to manage zoning and mistakes do occur. Please feel free to ask me any questions at any point if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
My name is John Johnson, 1300 Massa Side Trail, um, suburban estates. So I'm a licensed builder, residential. I work in commercial construction. And in the field of construction, which applies to rules, ordinances, codes, which are much more complicated than setbacks and stuff like that, usually that's the easiest part of building is getting your house square out a lot, figuring out where you can build. And most of the time we have to bring in a surveyor. They find the lines, they drop the corners, they drop the pins and they make the building square and there's a record of it. And when there's a discrepancy in code and rules, it's always that the most restrictive governs. It's like that in residential construction. It's like that in commercial construction. We run into it all the time and the inspector on the job will always go with the bigger nail or the stronger screw. If you know, they don't know which one, it has to govern. If there's a discrepancy, that's how it always happens. And, um, as far as suburban estates goes, it is meant to be an estate. It's supposed to be a nice estate where people can retreat and be away from each other and yet still be a part of the community. And that's why no one, no one's using it for farming or cattle, even though we could if we wanted to. And agricultural has a completely different set of rules for it. I know a lot of places, unless it's agricultural, you can't build a barn before you build a house. You have to have a house before you can build a barn in a lot of cases. And I believe if you look at the table, why it says that there's a discrepancy is because three acres or less is the 30 foot. Everything five and above is the 50 feet. That's probably where this, am I, Mr. Davis?
You're on. Getting close.
Right. There's difference as Mike McDonald was talking about, there's a different setback for the smaller acre lots that allows them to build within a different set of guidelines versus the 10 acre parcels, which we all are a part of. And most of the community which has signed these petitions, even though some most likely are not suburban estates, they're aware of the issue going on and they would agree that it's wrong to be changing a rule to benefit one of the community, which person didn't even care enough to show up and speak his opinion here today. I mean, I think that says a lot. I mean, he's been fighting so hard for this, he gets to put his character on. So the rest of the community which wants to protect their privacy and setback and really the best neighbors are the neighbors you can't see, but they're there for when you need help. And that's what we're trying to preserve here. Um, I'd say keep.
It's not splittable. The property's not splittable.
That's correct. The property is not splittable. There's no way you can split off anywhere these suburban states. So I think it's in the township and the community's best interest to keep these suburban estate lots as they are. Because down the road, they're probably going to be worth a heck of a lot more if you're not on top of one another. Thank you for serving the community and thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you.
I just want to say one.
I think you should submit all this for the record.
All right. Well, I will.
Sir? Michael Tenalia, 216 Mayfield Lane. Uh, I've heard a lot said here. Heard people say it's currently 50, but I heard you say it's not 50. It's sometimes 30. Even described it here, sometimes it's 30, sometimes it's 50. I didn't hear anyone say which buildings we're talking about. Clearly the house needs to be more centered, but outbuildings, you wouldn't want them in the center of your backyard. That doesn't make any sense. So there should be a different setback for outbuildings, sheds and barns. Clearly it should be lower because you would want it offset. It would look ridiculous to have an outbuilding directly behind your building, your primary home. So don't leave it that way. You might want to expand. Instead of just voting on whether it could be 50 or 30, you might want to expand the whole topic and clarify it a little bit more. I heard you say you always use the biggest nail, you always use the most restrictive. But we fight it every day. Every day. We know the inspector's wrong. He's going to rule that way, but we're going to call him an idiot because he is for using the most restrictive. That's not what we're supposed to be doing. We're supposed to use the most logical. So, uh, you're asking me? I think you should put some language in there that says something about the house has to be more centered, but outbuildings would have a side setback of 10% of your property width. And that would make a hell of a lot more sense and it would be in everyone's best interest.
Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Smith? Can I submit these also for the record?
Yeah.
May I also, may I also say that when Mike, I don't remember his last name, but he was the building inspector, maybe within 10 years came out to my house. He walked my entire property with me and he knew every setback. He told me where I, yes, you could put it here, no, you can't put it here, you could put it there, no, you can't put it there, you can't put it there. He knew the setbacks by heart. And this, this manufactured confusion is a little hard for me to believe that when you look at one chart for the smaller parcels, it's 30 feet. For the 10 acres, it's 50 feet. If, if, I don't know who got confused with it. If it's, uh, uh, Lo, the new building inspector, I even ran into Mike up in Leonard. He still knew what the setbacks were for suburban estates. So I just feel like I'm being made out to be a villain when I'm just trying to protect what everybody here is supposed to do, the codes that are on the books. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I see no order approaching the thing. Ms. Johnson, would you care to look at my pile here?
I'm sorry. I have one last thing to say. Um, so I, I know that we've heard a lot here tonight about how, you know, this could have been a mistake, um, about how, uh, there's a lot of emotions that are charged in this, you know, and it's between this neighbor and that neighbor. I do want to put it on the record that this, this isn't about any of that for me. This is about our properties and I do know for a fact that people in my community have gone to the township and have been told that this 50 feet is what they had to abide by. Um, you know, Ms. Johnson is one of them. And I just want to stick with that. If it's, you know, if it's so hard to be able to put something in the middle of your property, I mean, this hasn't even come up before. I just think that if this has been going on this long and we've only had one or two problems of this ever, that we could, we could stick with 50 feet. And all these years, so I just, that's what I wanted to say. I don't think it's been a big issue.
Thank you.
There's also a way to apply for variance if there's issues with your lot size. And as you can see, there isn't very many lots that are affected by it.
Okay. Thank you. Roseanne, would you like to see what I compiled here? It was, I will make a matter of public record.
Sure.
I want to make sure that you agree that I put together all the correspondence that I've had and what everyone else has given me and.
Fine. I think that these are all the usual letters.
That's the file.
I'm sure it's accurate. There's 80 letters that say keep it the same. There's what, 100 and maybe 60, some 75 or whatever. Got some more. Um, I, I trust that Pauline does a fine job. She's been a great help to me. Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Then Pauline, these are a matter of public record and I will give them to you.
Thank you.
And at that point, I will close the public hearing at, what's that, 6:37 or something like that? And thank you, audience, for cooperating very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, zoning ordinance article 13.031. This has to do with the lake issue. New thoughts about some docking issues, some boat issues, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Is Wayne Hodges in the audience?
Will be.
Wayne, I would ask you to please, as president of the Lake Village Property Owners Association, to familiarize us with why have this board been requested by the township board and check in to this proposed situation.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to depart now, not because Wayne's going to speak, but. No, it's an old issue with Bob. Put Bob on.
No. Good to see you.
You too.
And, um, remember my advice, I said we get a legal opinion to make sure what, what we're looking at is, is compatible.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks for attending.
Now I can put a couple of comments back in, Bob.
See you, Wayne.
As your chairman indicated, Wayne Hodges, I live at 825 Co. Drive. I'm also the president of the Lake Village Property Association. I'd like to make some overview comments about the topic, but then also we thought this was important enough that we formed a study committee inside our property firm association. And one of the key leaders of that committee, who's also a board member, is here tonight. And I will make him available in terms of if you have detailed questions. And I will make him available in terms of if you have detailed questions, he's actually probably better equipped than I am. But in terms of overview, you know, there are probably different legitimate points of view as far as the ordinances that have been in place for many, many years. In fact, I believe since 1988. You know, you might look at it and say, well, the property owners have ignored or intentionally violated those ordinances and should be punished. You might also look at it and say, well, the township has been consistently enforcing those ordinances. It only takes action today because a private citizen signed complaints. You might also look at the ordinances and the variances that come with them. You know, when ordinances have frequent requests and a grant of variances, that places those ordinances integrity in question. I think also in the same light, when the actions of the citizenry frequently and long-term ignore the ordinances, that too places the integrity of those ordinances in question. You might also look at a slightly different point of view and say the needs and desires of the Lakeville Proprietary Association and the residents have evolved over the past 30 years due to the availability of new technologies, changes in family lifestyles, and a shift from seasonal part-time summer vacation cottages towards full-time year-round residence. Simply put, Lakeville is no longer up north like it was 30 to 50 years ago. More and more property owners are raising their families on Lakeville Lake as their permanent home. The last point of view I would comment on is the Lakeville Proprietary Association supports the intent of the Lake Overlake District, of which this quoted section is, 130301, because it focuses on trying to consider what is natural. By recognizing the unique and fragile character of freshwater lakes and their immediate water sheds, the hazards to the public health, the safety, and the welfare caused by improper use of such lakes and lakefront can cause serious issues. And yet circumstances do change. Think for a moment. 30 years ago, we didn't have any invasive species that were in the lake. Today, the property owner association is battling an onslaught of invasive species that infest the lake today. We spend over $75,000 a year trying to control those invasive species and to prevent them where possible, and the list gets longer each year. Now, I understand that particular point isn't germane to the ordinance, but it's an example that change happens whether we like it or not sometimes, and we have to deal with it. Old ordinances are not necessarily bad. The issue is what is reasonable, given today's situation and for the foreseeable future for the property owners of Lakeville Lake. I'll now turn it over to Mike Bartlett as the spokesman of our study committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening and thank you for your time. My name's Mike Bartlett, 1469 Rochester Road, and I co-chaired a work team to review the dock policy. And as Wayne mentioned, its policy has been in place at Assam Township for roughly 30 years, 1988, I think, is when it was put in place. And we commend you for putting in place number one because had you not done it, Assam Township and Lakeville Lake would not be unique as it is. If you did have policy, you basically default to what the state policy, where you have no rules for seasonal docks and you have a rigid rule for permanent dock. The overlay district provides one common dock policy that every lake owner can participate in, understand, and utilize on this lake. 30 years ago, it made sense what the policy was that was put in place. It was a single dock, six feet wide, 35 feet long. We've done surveys of the lake, and if you take a look where people live on the lake now, they're often sitting on the end of their docks with two chairs, fishing with their grandchildren, watching sunset, and they have Ts on the end of their docks. They have Ls. Roughly 40% of the docks on this lake are non-compliant. So, we've had a situation where, over the years, people have adapted to what they need. You know, styles change, needs change. The ordinance did change. So, all of a sudden, we have a lot of people now that we want to enforce the policy out of compliance for, you know, no, without the intention on their part. They sure didn't plan on breaking that ordinance. They just wanted to enjoy the lake. But the needs have changed. When the ordinance was put in place, no variation of that straight dock was allowed. And as I mentioned, people now have Ls, they have Ts, they want a place where a neighbor can tie up a boat on the end. Boats are different than they were 30 years ago. We're now dealing with jet boats, tritunes, jet skis. We're also dealing now with wave boats, not wakeboard boats, but wave boats. Boats that people actually surf behind. The wave is so big. So, that's compelling many lake owners to have to tie their boats up or on both sides or have to put them on lifts to protect them from being slammed up against the shores and the rocks. So, the activity on the lake is different than it was 30 years ago. It's no longer a five-horsepower fishing boat. It's now $180,000 boats that put out a three-foot wave. People are trying to protect their investments while still enjoying the lake. Our dock policy hasn't kept up with the times to be able to provide, you know, fair and consistent support for those needs for safety. One other thing that the ordinance did do 30 years ago was allow for additional walkways for larger-sized lots. If your lot's over 75 foot, for every additional 75 feet, you're allowed another boat. Nothing allowed, variance to allow you to dock it. The proposal we had before you allows lots over 75 feet to allow a person to have another walkway. What we're finding is that obviously more configurations allow space for people to stop, to visit, to enjoy the lake, to be pleasant boating. These existing ordinance is really unmanageable for lake owners. It's unmanageable for Assam Township to administer because we have so many violators. It just has not kept up to date with the times. It's similar to the 55 mile an hour speed limit. Everybody's recognized that now on the highway, we want to go 70, and now we've got 75 going north. Ordinances and policies within the state have to be modified to what the needs of the people are. Likewise, in stock ordinance, we suggested minimal changes that allows it to become current with the needs of lake owners without violating the intent. Nothing modifies the two-boat limit per lake property owner. Nothing is going to add more boats or risk safety to the people on the lake. It allows you to safely dock and moor your boat and allows people that want to have an L or a T to have a, you know, sit out and watch the sunset, have a cold one, or fish with their grandkids, to not be in violation of an ordinance that never thought of that. You know, no harm 30 years ago, but if you look around the lake, it's not uncommon, I'd say 40, 50% of the docks are an L or a T. No harm. It's not hurt anybody. It just allows people to sit, but they're technically out of compliance. That's why we're asking for modification to this ordinance. We looked at it long and hard, and yet I recommend Assam Township for having a standard dock policy that's better than what the state has because the state, when it comes to seasonal docks, it's Katie bar the door, you do anything you want. This provides, the recommendation we have forward here, provides a consistent, reasonable dock policy that can be administered by the township. It also includes an overriding authority that should there be a dispute, and there's going to be somebody that's complaining about a neighbor, you know, pie-shaped lots where everybody's dock runs into each other because they're in a cove, somebody's going to have to be a peacemaker. This ordinance, as we recommended it, puts that sole authority on Assam Township ordinance enforcement officer to be the final say of what's allowed between neighbors. Right now, you don't have that, and you've got people that are bumping into each other. So, it allows a remedy for resolution when there is a conflict. But what we brought forward was overly endorsed by the Lakeville Lake owners when we brought it to a meeting. We worked on this long and hard, we had multiple meetings on it, and this isn't our first draft, but we think what we have here is reasonable, is manageable, is consistent with the intent of Assam Township as far as where you want to keep the lake, but it allows people to be compliant and still have the joy of what they've invested on in living on the lake. So, if you have questions, I can send you a presentation that we did to the lake owners. It shows, obviously, some configurations that people can have and be compliant because right now, all you're allowed is six feet long, 35 feet out, nothing, straight. That's all you're allowed. And what we want to allow people to have is a place to put two chairs and fish with your grandkid, you know, a place to have somebody come up and tie up their boat at the end, you know, and visit. And right now, you can't do it. And right now, you know, people have, you know, with all the intentions, they've done what they needed to do to be able to enjoy the lake, and that's why you have such a high non-compliance. We think with these minor changes, you're going to eliminate the non-compliance and we're going to have something that's much more administratively easy to administer for the township. So, I appreciate your time. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I'd be happy to forward you the presentation that we sent to the lake owners if you want. It's got a lot of in-depth research. But Wayne, I believe you sent the copy of what was recommended by the subcommittee, the before and after with the tax.
Well, we'd be happy to answer any questions, but very simply, we're asking for four things. We're asking for lake lots that are over 75 feet in width, that they be allowed a second dock. And we can explain why if you have questions. Regarding the current ordinance of 35 feet in length, six feet wide, which is 210 square feet, we're asking that they be allowed to be 40 feet long. Why? Because that's simply practical. You can't buy 35 feet of longer in all one pieces. And we're asking that we be allowed not to just have a straight dock, but to have a square in it or an L so that families can sit out there and congregate and enjoy the lake and the activities from the dock. I would remind you that a dock isn't just where you park a boat. It's where you spend a lot of time on the lake. The last thing is, as Mike referred to, we'd like to see in the ordinances something along the lines of 10-foot setback from the property lines extended out into the water because we do have situations where there is basically no ordinance that prevents people from parking on top of each other with their boats. With pie-shaped lots, if you extend the lot line out into the lake...
I just, I didn't hear that part.
I'm sorry. Sometimes I don't listen to myself either. So, those are the four points that we're asking for your consideration on. And if those aren't clear, please tell us that they're not clear, and we'll be more than happy to explain in excruciating detail if necessary.
Thank you, Wayne. If I could just pick one comment on this setback. The draft proposal that was presented or forwarded onto the board has a grandfather clause in that. That's because there are many lake owners that currently have their dock, currently situated on their lot line, and they don't use the right side at all, you know. And to ask those people to go and invest, especially if the permanent dock could move it, when there is no issue with the neighbor right now, would be a hardship. So, that's why we asked for a grandfather, you know, affecting such and such a thing that this policy be put in place.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much. Okay, the board has a resident preparing, and he would like to talk to us for a minute. Right, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes. I can make, I can make comment.
We'd like to hear from you a little bit.
Well, we've heard from two presenters on the positive side. I think it's important that this commission had a brief verbal overview as to what entailed causing the LLPoa to get involved. Background, in 2017, there were complaints filed about non-compliant docks on the shoreline of Lakeville Lake. And there was some response from the building department, namely the building inspector, who also assumes responsibility as the ordinance enforcement agent for the township. Little action was taken, and there have been one, perhaps two recent cases that have gone to court involving dock placement, permanent dock placement on the shoreline of the lake. And in 2018, there were several new and non-compliant docks installed on the shoreline of the lake and predominantly on the south shore. Some of these non-compliant docks were not one, not two docks, not three docks, not four docks, but in one particular case, five docks. Another property on the lake with a circumstance, installed seasonal docking that was estimated to be 100 feet in length and parallel to the shoreline. There were complaints filed with the township. And after a couple of efforts by the inspector, finally, the property owner was identified and proper notice was sent to that property owner with the exaggerated deck configuration or dock configuration approaching 100 feet. The second property with five docks was also notified in writing of a violation. No action taken. One of those two violators publicly stated that the township is not going to enforce the ordinance. I will do what I choose to do. And this statement was made in public and in fact was also stated during one of the LLPoa meetings. So, the building department elected to structure what is called a systematized procedure. One of the property owners claimed selective enforcement. And as a result of that, no action was taken because there is a group that thinks that the township, building department, created a systematized procedure to identify properties with, from an aerial view, a satellite overview, that have non-conforming docks. As a result of that systematized procedure, approximately 40 letters were mailed to owners' property notifying them that they're non-compliant. Some people think that those letters were sent to establish standing for the township if and when the township elects to enforce the dock ordinance and therefore circumvent the claim of selective enforcement because the general public has now been notified. So, some people ask the question, the ordinance officer has a non-compliant dock, is in violation... So, some people ask the question, the ordinance officer has a noncompliant dock, is in violation of the law, admits that he has a nonconforming dock, and yes, something should be done about it. So there is a group of people who think, well, wow, if the person responsible for enforcing the ordinance is noncompliant with the ordinance, who is that person to tell me what I am to do and cannot do? So, the issue, after the letters were received by approximately forty people, put these people on notice, as some of these people knowingly install a noncompliant dock, because, and perhaps, a lack of enforcement normalized the risk of a person installing a nonconforming dock. So if you know what the penalty is, and you're going to get your wrist slapped, go ahead, install the dock. Hold your hand out. So, when the mailing went out to approximately forty property owners, the buzz started, and people started to complain, and approached the property owner association, and asked if it was in the bylaws of that association to speak for the property owners. And there is a section in the bylaws that provides for representation. It's a great organization. So, at the annual meeting, which occurs in June, there was a proposal made, and a vote was taken by those members in attendance at the annual meeting.
Bless you.
Bless you. Bylaws of the LLPOA stipulate that at the annual meeting, those members present who vote on an issue speak for the entire membership. So at that annual meeting, there was a vote enlisting the assistance from the LLPOA Board, namely, President Mr. Hodges, to draft a letter to the township requesting the prospect of a text amendment. The vote was twenty-four in support, and if I recall correctly, six in non-support. So, we have twenty-four people speaking for two-hundred-and-eight property owners. The result was a letter written to the township board trustees, asking for action to be taken. Mr. Pearson acted on it through the board, and now the planning commission is addressing the controversy. As a result of the planning commission now involved on its topic, a pause was placed on enforcement of the ordinance. So some people think that that pause of not enforcing the ordinance is a positive reinforcement to nonenforcement. Therefore, people continue to install a noncompliant dock, or docks. I'll just summarize by saying, there are two or three different groups of property owners. I have talked with many property owners on this topic. I have gone door-to-door and asked for input on the topic, and I can classify three groups. The first classification would be the advocates. And those advocates for the change already have two docks or more with configurations that are nonconforming. Pick a letter of the alphabet, a reasonable letter of the alphabet, and they want to protect their investment, so some are claiming the ordinance is not enforceable, because of history of a record with the building department, namely, enforcement of ordinances. Then we have the non-supporters of adding a second dock, or four points as proposed, because they abide by the law. And some people who have installed a noncompliant dock have done so because they were unaware of the ordinance, and they did not ask. But many of the people who have noncompliant docks have done it knowingly, which creates the third group. The third group of people I will identify as pointing a finger at those people who are noncompliant, and knowingly, knowingly install an illegal dock, and saying that, wow, they did this on purpose, they did it with full knowledge of the ordinance, now they receive a letter stating that if you don't correct it within X time period, you will be cited. If you are cited and fail to comply within X period, you'll go to court. So, that resulted in a pause of enforcement, but it created the mentality of this third group that simply state this. Those people who are noncompliant have created a self-imposed hardship. And now, they go to a third party, namely, the township, asking the township via the planning commission to relieve them of that burden. So that, that is the overview that brought attention to the LLPOA, and rightfully so, the LLPOA has created the letter. That being said, and having a background now, I am talking seasonal docks only. Permanent docks require a permit from Eagle. And permits have been issued for some permanent docks on the lake. But this issue focuses only on seasonal docks as far as the history that I just shared with you as a background. I think it's important that you understand how that came to be. So that being said, I yield to the chair.
Thank you very much, sir. Would you explain to the audience where the Eagle is?
Yes. That is the former DNR, MDEQ. It's a new organization. It's the Great Lakes Environment...
Environment, Great Lakes Environment.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
It is new.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. One thing you said that might lead to a slight clarification, is you say seasonal docks. A lot of docks are considered seasonal, but aren't taken in. Is that correct?
Yes.
I mean, they're not put into the great big pilings or anything like that, but the...
Yes, it's a seasonal dock.
They're still not taken in.
It's a seasonal dock. Property owner likes to leave in year-round. Correct.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sergeant. Well, board, you heard the stories from the three gentlemen.
Excuse me.
It's up to us to decide what we're going to do about the situation, because it was placed in our hands by the township board. In consideration of the fact that Mr. Bowman is not here, and I presume he will be back in working order in some time soon, I would take... You can't hear me?
No.
They whispered each other. I would think we can make a motion to table this until we have our permanent council to look into the situation also, and give us some guidelines, and I presume that's where we'll possibly start heading after we have some professional advice, unless some of you folks have some other comments.
Does that include the legal opinion?
I think the legal opinion would come after we have council with Mr. Bowman.
Is that a motion?
I'm waiting for one.
I may. Table it.
I'll second the motion.
He had his hand up.
Okay, we...
I can't see.
We'll have discussion.
I just know if I could approach the podium and make a comment on the docks.
I have a motion in a second. I would make a comment.
You will?
Yes, sir.
My name is Justin Berg, 1575 Rockchester Road. I'm a retired city worker from the city road, and all things can be overgoverned, and the work that Mike and this crew has put in on this, to me, is really good, should be easy. I just don't want to see this thing overgoverned, like I've sat in on a lot of meetings and had that happen, where nothing really gets resolved properly.
I don't think we're going to rush into it. We thank you for your comment. Like you said, our...
Things can go overgovernment, when you're dealing with the government.
I know.
And this is pretty, pretty cut and dry from all the work he's put into it.
Okay, our normal council's not here, so we'll get into it. We're not going to rush into it. Another hand?
I'll wait until after your vote, and do it in public forum if you prefer.
All right. That being considered, I have motion in a second and discussion. I think none of ours bears the eye.
I bow.
All the same side? Okay, we will postpone that. I'd like to read something to the group concerning United States debt.
Let's do that in public forum.
Oh, is this public forum?
Not yet. I haven't declared it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we're taking care of the audience. We're taking care of the board. All right, public forum, and text on the item. Go ahead, Joe.
Okay. I did some arithmetic. The United States national debt is $23 trillion. Now, if we had a surplus each year of $1 billion, it would take 2,300 years to pay it off. If we had a surplus of $10 billion, it would only take 2,300 years to pay it off. If we had a $100 billion surplus every year, yeah, sure, it would take 230 years. There must have been a typo in the Constitution concerning the balanced budgets. Don't look at these figures too long. It will break your heart. The state must balance their budgets, and you and I have to balance our budgets, or we go bankrupt. Is that the future of the USA? We're worth more every year, so we're just going further in debt every year. Get used to it. I don't approve of it, but get used to it. Anybody else public forum? Sir?
I'm going to follow that.
It's only $1 trillion a year.
I'm just going to send an extra $100 to pay down the national debt. I'm not doing it now.
It'll take a million years. My name's Bob Schramm, 166 Annalee Road. I was on the committee with Mike and others that drafted the initial text ordinance change, and kind of shepherd this through, and I appreciate what Wayne said and what Mike said. They did it eloquently, and probably much better than I can. But I have a little different take, and I do want to comment a little bit on Chuck, who I value highly, but disagree a little bit with him at times. The dock ordinance amendment proposal you have before you is of critical importance to the vast majority of people who reside in Lake Villa Lake. An amendment should also be of critical importance to Addison Township. Section 130301 was originally passed in 1988. At that time, there was little or no information sent to Lakeville lake owners, and no input was received into that ordinance. In the past 31 years, the ordinance has been widely ignored by lake property owners, and no enforcement effort until this year by the township. Half the docks and lakes are out of compliance with current ordinance. I disagree somewhat again with Chuck, when he said that people are willingly ignoring the ordinance. These letters did not go out until spring, and the pause wasn't until July, late June, early July, when the township authorized it. These docks were all put in this year prior to that. So I would disagree with one or two exceptions, that people are widely just ignoring the ordinance. This spring, the LLPOA recognized that this is a very serious problem for both the residents and the township, and appointed a committee to review and amend the ordinance. At the LLPOA annual meeting on June 25th, as you heard before, the draft ordinance was reviewed. Jeff sent notices of all this out with information to every single owner. Chuck referred to, there was only a small number of people there, where there was roughly forty people there at that time, which quite frankly is pretty good for the LLPOA meetings. But everybody who was involved got information on that and couldn't be there if they wanted to. And I believe the vote, and hopefully, Wayne, I think it was 34 to four, not six, so, because I talked to two of the four people. And no matter what you do, you can't solve those two problems. So President Wayne Hodges and the board did send the information to you. The amendment is needed by lake property owners, one, to bring the vast majority of docks into compliance, two, to recognize, as Mike said, the changing lifestyles with use of docks in social areas and wave boats, et cetera, and also the changing demographics. 1988, it was estimated over 5% of the people on the lake were year-round. Now it's in the 40% to 45% range, what I understand is the estimate. This amendment is of critical importance to the township, because, one, the current ordinance is clearly outdated, as been said by both Wayne and Mike. The original ordinance passed at zero input. Resident education was nonexistent. People, even for the last five years, who put it in, it's been nonexistent. People just, it wasn't being talked about, and it wasn't an issue at any level. Current enforcement is based on a flawed interpretation of law. The current ordinance doesn't say anything about not having an L or a T or configuration. It says sixty-five by, or six by thirty-five. Well, that thirty-five could be something different than straight. There's a flawed interpretation, is my understanding, from an ordinance at the state level, which I have searched and searched and searched, and cannot find where the inland lakes and streams at. Was it 241? Chuck, 2451, 241, whatever, 251 anyway. Whatever the lakes and stream act is, there's definitely nothing.
Probably Act 451.
451.
Section 301.
Correct. And there's nothing that I have found in that act that deals with anything prohibiting configuration of docks. Matter of fact, over the last two months, I have been on Lake Shannon, Waldo Lake, Long Lake, Lake Shimon, and Strawberry Lake. Every one of those docks, every one of those lakes, has the vast majority of docks that have a configuration of an L or a T. So this is, we're not breaking new ground here at all. In summary, I think there's three issues. One, is change needed? I think there's no question about what level you're at, and even the attorney seemed to indicate that, that it's probably, what he saw was reasonable, and should make sure we're not conflicting with anything with the state, but yet, this might be something that's good for the township. The second issue... The second issue is what should the text amendment accomplish? One, to make the vast majority of the Lakeville Lake docks compliant. Two, to allow flexibility in various dock configurations. Three, to eliminate, with the exception of what Mike said about the lot, some of the docks right on the lot line, of any grandfathering. Create a dock ordinance that is enforceable. Dock should not be located in such a way as to infringe on a neighbor. And there's provisions in there for addressing that, uh, through the township. And also provide one additional dock for larger properties who pay substantially higher taxes based on shoreline assessment. We obviously need a fresh start. We need a fresh start. We need to educate people. Whatever action either this board takes or the township board takes, we need to educate everybody so we don't get into this situation five, 10, 15 years from now. So where do we go from here? There is clearly a compelling need for change. You need to send this amended ordinance to the township board with your strong recommendation for approval. That's my hope. The township board is looking for leadership on this issue. And the LLPOA and the planning commission is in a good position to provide that leadership. I wanna thank you for your cooperation. I would, another point I'd like to argue with Chuck is that he says people have been non-compliant over years with intent to violate. I contend, most of those people, and I've talked to a lot of people, not as many as Chuck has, but a lot of people, and it's more ignorance of the ordinance, not violation. Any violation would have to be people who did something after March of this year. So I hope you will take this up with due diligence and forward and honor your approval to the township board. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Anyone else in public forum?
One quick point. Going back to the first item of two docks if you have over 75 feet of lakefront. To those who don't live on the lake, that may not, you know, register. Why? Let me explain why. If I have, I have over 400 feet of lakefront that I own. And I have a dock that is compliant. If I have two boats docked at that dock, which I'm allowed to do. And I have a neighbor who comes and visits by boat, I have nowhere right now except the six feet on the end for that person to tie up to. So there are practical issues here, not just lifestyle issues for some people. It's not the case across the board. But there are genuine, real reasons why some of this is being requested. And as my friend Mr. Sergeant and my friend Mr. Schramm and Mr. Bartlett have said, you can take different points of view. You can take the point of view of people did it ignorantly. People did it in knowing violation. The township didn't really do its job. Things have changed. You can have a lot of different points of view, and they're all true. You, unfortunately, not me, get to struggle with what's the right thing to do going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
Okay. So, yeah, just Rob Bartlett, 30 Kathleen. I think everything's been said already, so I don't have a lot to add. Except that I support going forward with really what's been presented. We've been on the lake a long time as a family. We have a dock that was put in permanent in 87, actually. And we received a non-compliance letter that says if we don't remove it... And as you know, those compliance letters said within two weeks or whatever the last one tried to recommend. You will, in essence, be fined for it. You'll receive a penalty, and the penalty is basically 500 if you read the ordinances.
And each day is 500?
Each day would be 500 if they fined you each day. Correct. So I guess what I wanted to kinda add to this is the issue needs to be addressed. The current ordinances is out of date. And I think, you know, hopefully this board and the city and the township will look at that and just get it corrected so that there is something permanent going forward that everybody can comply with. Because today it's not there. And it's not fair today, for sure. And so it basically is, logically needs to be corrected. I mean, just from a common sense standpoint. Thanks.
Are you in compliance from 1987?
I am in compliance from 87. But, and so you wanna say it's grandfathered, but you can go through all of the mess that I've gone through in talking with the township. They are yet to answer me. And even with my emails, I'm yet to receive a return email. I know everybody's afraid to put anything in writing maybe, right? So...
Thank you very much.
Thank you, yes.
Is it? One more, twice, right?
No, there's one more.
One more. Always one more. Don't shoot me.
I don't know what you're gonna do with it. But you've got a genuine dilemma, in my opinion, of temporary docks versus permanent docks. There are permanent docks. And if I choose to put in a permanent dock, I can pretty much whatever now Eagle says I can do. But if I choose to have temporary dock, I've gotta comply with township ordinances. So is that the situation we wanna create? Where people that put in permanent docks can just have whatever configuration they want? Forty feet long, big L shapes or whatever? H's, whatever? That's part of what you gotta consider here. Because frankly, it's not right, in my opinion. I understand you're trapped in the ordinances because of the limited authority you have over the township versus the state authority. But I do believe you're gonna need to consider that in what's reasonable and what's fair going forward. And I only rise again to make that point because for those of you who don't have experience on the lake, that may not register right.
You alluded to the fact that if you put a permanent dock in, you can do anything you want?
As long as I can get Eagle to approve it.
Well, that's what I mean. You have to have a permit from Eagle.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand that.
It's not necessarily true.
No?
Because the ordinance further restricts state statute. And even though a permit may be, a minor permit may be issued for the installation of a permanent dock, it is still subjected to local ordinance restrictions. Six feet wide, 35 feet in length, linear.
We've got a lot of...
That's why Mr. Davis said we're gonna have to talk to him, right?
I know, but that's... I understand where you're coming from. But there are a lot of permanent docks out there right now that are considered legal and don't comply.
Correct.
With the township board.
You're saying they're legal with the top, with the state, but not with the township?
I'm not sure the township is citing those.
Okay, I didn't mean by citing. You said they were legal.
They're permitting.
But they were permitted, is that correct by the state?
They're permitted, so they're outside of the ordinance.
Yeah, they're outside the ordinance.
One last comment.
Yeah, one last.
Mike Bartlett, 1469 Rochester. The good news is, the draft we gave you will fix all this. So please, give it a good look. It's reasonable, it's manageable, it takes us forward. It fixes a mistake from 30 years ago. I really think you'll like it when you start absorbing what's there. Thank you.
I like your optimism. I've never seen a law yet that...
I worked on it a long time.
That's why there's a ZVA. But thank you anyway. Anybody else? It says public forum is over. Commission report. Anybody wanna report? Nobody wants to report? According to Linda. Then it says adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
One at a time. I have a motion in a second, but adjourn. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in privacy of the house?
Aye.
Full state sign? We are adjourned at 30. Thank you very much.